All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City and New Franklin Council. Before we start the council meeting, we have committee meetings. These are less formal than the actual meetings, so if anyone from the public would like to make any comments, you're welcome. We ask you to be free, and these are up to the committee chair. We have four first readings and one fourth reading tonight. The first we have is Finance Committee, Mr. Cox.
Thank you. We will open the Finance Committee at 6:02. Our first resolution is 24R-04, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Summit and declaring an emergency. This is something that's been going on for quite a while, and this is actually retroactive back to a year ago, for two years with two one-year options, for the same cap as we've had before at $4,000 per year. Any comments, sir?
Well, they got our address wrong, but we'll clean that up. And you're absolutely correct. It had lapsed. They still provided the service. They sent us an invoice in 2023, but we didn't have a resolution approved it. And they were having discussions between New Franklin, Bardren, and Summit County, and so that's why there was a delay. I suppose they're going to ask for that payment. But it's kind of reflective of what our economic risk, it was $900 and some dollars from the service they provided. And it keeps our, in a felony case, you're entitled to a preliminary hearing to determine whether there's probable cause to send it to the grand jury. And so when we got to do a preliminary hearing, our guys have to come off shift, hang around the court until it's time, prepare, testify. And then when it goes to grand jury, they gotta do the same thing again. And so this program has been in place for a number of years, and it sort of streamlines that process. And the prosecutor's office screens those, and if they feel that there's merit for a felony, they still goes to grand jury, and the grand jury still have a decision whether to indict. So it's a good thing for us.
Any questions? Alan Spitzer? Will ask the way to three on this? Excellent. We'll move on to Resolution 24R-06, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Tyler Technologies for data archiving services and declaring an emergency. And I believe this is with our dispatch center, and it's basically, we're switching companies?
This is, we have already switched to Tyler. Previously, we used Sundance for not just dispatch, but for our police and their reports. And we've had to pay Sundance to continue to archive that material. So we've been paying them an annual, I can't remember off the top of my head, a few thousand bucks at least.
It's, um, I'm trying to think, I'd say between 200 and 400 a month.
Yeah. So somewhere around four or five grand a year. So we got a price from Tyler to archive that material. And then whatever we're paying Tyler on a monthly basis, it will include the continued archive, and then we'll have access to all those reports through Tyler, and we'll terminate our relationship with Sundance. So it's a housekeeping thing, but it's a good one for us. Puts it all into one book.
I vaguely remember this being talked about a little bit when we did this switch from Sunday.
Yep. And their number was a lot bigger.
Okay.
When we first had the conversation. I want to say, well, I better not guess, but it was significantly higher.
And we're not looking at moving away from Tyler in town soon, probably right now there's a multi-year contract.
And the whole county is on Tyler now, so we want to be consistent in that regard. That's one of the major reasons we moved to Tyler.
Is that why it's always made out to Summit County Sheriff and not the city of Franklin?
Yes. And then no bill less than, uh...
I'd like to see that, I'm not sure. Whether they'll bill us directly or whether they'll go through the sheriff.
Questions, comments?
I guess the only thing is if it's made out to the county, and they bill us directly, will there need to be anything else to clean that up?
I would say no. This authorizes the expenditure.
Waive the three. We will close the Finance Committee meeting at 6:06.
All right. And next, we've got Mr. Aman with Streets and Drainage.
Thank you. We'll open the Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:07, Resolution 24005, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for sign replacement and declaring an emergency. I read over it, it seems pretty straightforward as I read over, it's just a cooperation agreement, just so that if we continue to clean the right of way, ODOT will cover the charge, Ohio Department of Transportation will cover the charge of the signs, because it's Abern Avenue, it's going down that hill, I think it's a good change, we'll get the replacement built here.
And it's consistent with the agreement we've had with that in the past, where they take from the signage and maintain the signage. Now, I guess they monitor those, and they determine that now's the time for new signs. So no cost to us, actually, our maintenance costs will go down because the signage will be newer, so.
Any other thoughts or comments? Waive the three. Perfect. We'll close the Streets and Drainage Commission, Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:08.
All right. Next, we have Community Development, Mr. Shaker.
We're going to open the Community Development Committee at 6:09. Real simple, we have a resolution to establish a citizen of the month program. We take the citizens inside of New Franklin, no employees, recommended from the council or the mayor, the general public. Would you like your input? Any comments?
No, I, thanks for bringing this on the agenda. I've been wanting to get something like this in place. This is just a, I think it's a nice way of council recognizing citizens who are involved beyond and making their community better. If we pass this, I'll work on getting a actual form together that we can use for nominations. Anybody in council, anybody in the community can make a nomination for somebody. We'll review it as a council as a whole and make recommendations, and they don't expire. Once you submit them, we'll hold them, and they're good for housing.
I really like this whole concept, because it's another one of those things that we as council can do, that the city can do to help build a camaraderie or a community involvement, a sense of involvement. So many people here still think they live in the city of Manchester, you know, or if they live in Coventry Schools, they think they live in Coventry Township, when they actually live in the city of New Franklin and have for a long time. So I think these types of things are just a great thing for us as a city and our citizens.
I know Mr. Cox had some good feedback on it, and I guess, you know, regarding your project you had a few years ago, Jim, where you spotlighted various businesses and stuff, is that something you've been willing to look at revising as far as?
I don't have time for that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Ask two, wave the three for this citizen of the month program. I guess we'll close the Community Development Committee at 6:12.
All right. And last on the agenda, Mr. Wolf with the Laws and Ordinances Committee.
Okay. I'd like to open the Laws and Ordinances Committee at 6:10 p.m. And ordinance to amend Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 11, and 14 of the New Franklin zoning code. I have reviewed this. Thank you for giving me a little bit of time on this last time. I've reviewed all these, it was really a lot of housekeeping issues. There was a couple, well, one item that stood out to me, but I did spend some time with Eric, you know, this afternoon, going over it, asking questions. The only thing that I found was, it's in Article 6, it's on matrix A, and it talks about minimum lot area for dwelling units, and it's new, in red, and it had, the whole column has under type "with sewer or without sewer." But the new ones don't recognize that, and most, it's the attached single family, one that says 3,500 square feet, but it doesn't recognize obviously that it would have to be with sewer. And I mentioned that to him, he thought that was a great idea to just amend it to have with sewer in two spots where it's the attached single family. Other than that, it's just reorganized, a word here, a word there. So I feel comfortable with these changes, but...
Are we able to pass that tonight as is, and are those minor changes, I guess?
I would think that that's a, to err on the side of caution here, that that would be considered a substantive change. There is certainly, I know there's an intention, once we get through this first revision, to go back into and address some issues such as that a second time around. And maybe that's something, I don't know if there's a specific reason for that distinction, but I wouldn't be comfortable telling you just to add it as a, because I think we'd want to hear from Wolf, Danny, and Zoni, and our consultant. So I would think that if you pass it tonight in the form that this is, you've made the record that that's an area that you'd like to look at, and we let them take another look at that. We can make that change anywhere along the process, because we're bringing other revisions back along the way as well. If that's something you're comfortable with, Mr. Wolf.
I think, I think the, it was, it might be overkill, and I would certainly be okay with it. It's, if somebody was going to try to build on a 3,500 square foot lot without sewer, I don't think the county would approve that.
Not going to happen.
So, I mean, we could, I think that it's fine without it. I'll defer to group.
I think we've been through a lot of time on this, and I think we need to get it passed.
Yes, I do too.
And that really sounds like window dressing.
I do too.
In practicality.
Yep.
It's more than that in reality, but in practicality, it's...
I agree with you. I would say that we would, I would love to see it passed.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I want to commend Mr. Wolf. I mean, you guys all do your homework. I was going to make a joke and say it was, used to be easy, but nobody did, ain't it? But unfortunately, I was sitting up there. But no, this is really hard work in council. And that's another example. You know, Mr. Wolf asked for some additional time, you gave him that time. I know you want every time, it's not maybe an automatic in some situations, but then he used that time. He could easily walk back in and said, yeah, I looked it all over, I'm good with it, but I heard him back there, because our walls are a little thin. He was back there for a couple hours, we were spending time on through this, so that's just a good start for the council leader. So any other input from the public?
I'll close the Law and Ordinance Committee meeting at 6:14 p.m.
All right. Thank you. Any of the other committees have anything they'd like to discuss? All right. With that, we'll call the order, the official meeting of the City and New Franklin, at 6:60.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your honor, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now, can you call the rule?
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Shaker?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Aman?
Present.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of January 3rd.
Seven.
Kelly?
Mr. Shaker?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
I'm still here.
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the financials for December 2023, subject to other.
Seven.
Kelly?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now it's time for public comment. This is the opportunity for the giant crowd of people that are here on this very, very cold night to speak if you'd like. Here, it'll be another opportunity to speak later in the meeting. So we move on to the legislation. The first reading is Resolution 24R-04. Kelly's?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Summit and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 24R-04.
Second?
Seven.
First and the second, the panel.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 24R-04.
Seven.
First and the second, the panel.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution 24R-05.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for sign replacement and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was brought into the Streets and Drainage Committee. We move to waive the three readings.
Seven.
First and the second, the panel.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution 24R-06.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies for data archiving services and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 24R-06.
First and the second.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we roll into the best part of the meeting. You guys, mayor's report?
Thank you. I'll try to run through these. First of all, tip the hat to the Service Department. You can't get every road all the time, we can't stop it from snowing, but we didn't hear much by way of complaints, I thought they did a marvelous job in difficult conditions once again, so kudos to those guys. I am pleased to announce that we have received from the Governor DeWine's Body Morn Campus Grant, a grant of, here, $76,475 for our body morn campus. And you remember, a couple weeks ago, we passed the resolution for the five-year contract, which totaled out a little less than $70,000. So this is going to cover the cost of that contract, which is beautiful. There were, apparently Sergeant John Heimball worked really hard on this, Captain Cryer, Chief Bickett utilized the services of Gatchel, we use them from time to time, and there were only 108 of these awards around the state. And we realized there's 88 counties, and everybody's asking. And there were only four awarded in Summit County, and New Franklin was one of the four. So that's just a really nice, really nice hit to start the year with. On another financial note, a reminder that real estate taxes are coming, nobody knows yet what. Fiscal Office, I guess, is digesting the information they got from the state as far as how to determine praise values. We posted something last week, we'll continue to post, there's a process that you could appeal and be heard if you don't agree with the valuation. So it's impossible to guess what that percentage increase is going to be, but we'll probably know by the end of the month from what I hear from the Fiscal Office.
You can see them online.
Okay, you see them now?
Yep, they're online.
All right, well, I'm afraid of them. All right. They're trying to kind of stay ahead of things. As you know, the marijuana resolution passed on the ballot. The state legislature is still talking about tweaking it to some degree. We're advised, some cities have adopted moratoriums against the opening of either dispensaries or cultivation. I don't have a list of who, but we know there are some. And it was brought to our attention that a shop was opened recently, again, I don't want to misstate, but in a community in Summit County. I can't remember if it was a city or township. So we haven't had any such applications, but I think it's, I wanted to, you know, kick that over to council for discussion, and they have to either day, I mean, but, you know, what the thoughts are on that. Do we want to do a moratorium, or do we not want to? You know, we can wait for the, you know, and see if there's applications, there haven't been any with the medical marijuana out here. I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing, but if there's a desire to put it on hold, then we would want to adopt the moratorium. So maybe you can discuss that, or give it some thought, look into it. If that's something you want to do, we can gather the earth and put some legislation together. And we're certainly interested in what the public might feel about that. I know there's some people would be adamantly opposed, and there's others who are using it for medical, would say that'd be nice, so. Okay, that's the only bad one I got. We are, we're pursuing a $2 million grant for drainage on South Main Street. The, you know, the solar reservoir, and the water that flows down there occasionally results in a stoppage. We've made application through Senator Brown's office in September, and Representative Sykes opened it up again. She's on the committee that considers these. And so we re-upped with her and let her know what we filed, and we're in communication with her. So that's going on, and we'll track that, and it'd be a beautiful thing if we could get that. What that would involve is new drainage along the west side, our side of 93, because what's there isn't functional.
Was this handled by ODNR though? Wasn't there some confusion there that they said 100 years ago that they would handle it, or? I don't even think I went that great for 100 years.
Install and maintain.
Yeah.
Those are the magic words that are in the deets, in the usings. They would install and maintain. We've brought that to their attention, and they've said, mm.
Okay, so they have agreed?
Well, they have. Oh, we've sat with them.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, they've got other projects, they're spending a lot of money out here, and it's on the list, but I don't, you know, I'd like to see it. If we get some federal money, it's going to get prioritized.
I guess.
They did Long Lake, they did the water over there on 46th Drive, they spent, they spent millions here between Coventry Township and New Franklin over the last three, four, five, six years, so.
Not that this is a valid concern, but it's a possibility that if we were to take that on through a grant, federal money or whatever, that we did it as the city, could we be usurping their install and maintain? Just something to be aware of, but...
Yeah, I think we'd want to partner if it comes through, and we indicated ODNR, you know, and be there, so we want to partner.
Okay, okay. So they'd be a party to that.
Yeah. We'd leave that hanging. I'm sure they're not going to admit it, neither are we. Well, the words are, you know, words have meaning.
Yeah.
I think if we ever litigated, if we win. But we don't necessarily want to get into litigation, of course, but it'll be in harm, unless we really had to.
Well, they've done a lot for us, as we know.
Okay. State Senator Christina Robner came to visit us, and that doesn't happen every day, and we had a very nice visit. And kept her abreast of what, you know, what our needs are, talked a little bit about what came out of the comprehensive plan, projects we have going, and she was very receptive and very polite and conscientious, as she always is. And last thing I have, tomorrow night, planning and zoning, there'll be a public hearing on the Sauric Farms application, and that's in this room at 6:30, and public's invited to attend. I don't know that they're, I don't want to speak for them, you know, I asked if they thought they were going to take action that night. It's probably more likely that they would go to a second hearing. I suppose it would depend on what their thoughts were, or maybe some adoption of the conditions or something like that. But if you want to be heard on it tomorrow night at 6:30. And notices have been sent far beyond what our responsibilities are for notice. Everybody up Cayman, everybody back in that neighborhood off of Dever Drive that abuts the, let's see, the west and northwest section of that property, they've all been notified. We didn't have to, but we told them we would, and we did. So that's tomorrow night at 6:30. That's all I got.
Sue, anything for the mayor's report?
Just a couple of things. As you know, we're in our, we've gotten over the hump of '23, but now we're in the race to the W2s, to 99s and everything. So, and through our first hang, which is usually horrendous. So it's coming along, but we can't take a breather just yet. I did want to mention to the new council members, did you get the email that I sent about OML's training?
Yes.
Okay. So if you decide that you want to do that, I can, I can go ahead and make that, set that up for you, and, you know, the city takes for you to go. So just let me know if you're interested. It's up to you. But I wanted to make sure that you got that information because they finally got that out on OML's website. I'm going to think, there's another thing that I can think of that's outside of our regular purview is it reworks our leaf drop-off that they do at the service department. We put in for our reimbursement, and we're going to end up with a little over $14,000 reimbursement for all that, all that work down there, just a good service to the community. Other than that, I don't have anything yet.
Yeah, I did want to mention also, you may have gotten the notices about the Ohio Ethics Disclosure Form that we're in a new year, and I don't know if they already sent it to you, but it has to be filed by anybody who's running for office or anybody who's holding office. If you got any questions about that, let me know. It's pretty self-explanatory, but it's an important piece. It may not seem like it, but I spent five days trying a case up in Summit County on a violation, alleged violation. We're successful, but it doesn't matter. But no, I mean, that's serious business. It's a free business here. So you've got to pay attention to that.
And you'll also remember that from last year's audit, that, that the auditors wanted to know the information on that. In fact, they, they did a request from Ethics so that they could go, because we have to know who we work for, each one, and all your interests, so that, so that we know that there aren't any, there isn't any, any problems with group business with the city or that kind of thing. So if you need to update any of that information, please get it to us because audits will be upon us before we pay a rap.
Okay, any old business?
Grant, the comp we talked about before about having a workshop. And I think, sent some emails. You guys have been we settled on February 3rd.
I thought if you want to get out any notification of that, we'll pull it here, and council chambers will put some tables together.
Just going to be an opportunity for council to sit and discuss our vision for the 24-year and goals that we may have and directions we might go.
Then you got time on that?
9 o'clock.
9 a.m., all right. Saturday, February 7th?
Yep.
On February 23rd.
23.
23.
24.
All right. Oh, that's good. At 9 a.m. All right, any new business?
I got something for old business if I could.
Oh, go ahead.
Sent out in the audience many, many times, the council's always talking about farming market.
Yes.
And if we don't act on it soon, it will be here and past us another year.
That is a minus too.
So I would be open to hearing some feedback from the public about who should be involved. If there's somebody out there that would like to volunteer to help get the people together, whether they're chicken people, bee people, farmers, breadmakers, whatever they're going to have there. But we need to start getting our ducks in the row, or that's even more passes.
You're chicken in the row?
There are really a lot of things you have to consider. Like, are you going to have it? Who's going to be the boss of your life? Now's the time to do it.
I think at least for the first year, you might want to add it in different parts of the city and see which one worked out the best and see, see most participation.
Where it works about.
A few years ago, that had come up, and I had talked with the lady that owns the guy that the Lakers, they offered the possibility of doing a parking lot in the back or something like that.
Oh, is it?
No, it wasn't. He said it was the.
Aaron. Yeah. Yeah, you got that. Here, obviously, there's, you know, they're from here, I'm sure. I don't know what all, how our relationship ever worked out with allowing.
We're about to, we're drafting agreements.
Okay, now we'll be ready to discuss it. So I think that would, that would be a feasible place.
With a lot in back.
Like, we welcome the lot in back, yeah.
Or grill park.
Grill. And then I was thinking about grill too, yeah.
I'll put something on our website, seeing if we can get some interest with some people who are maybe willing to be involved, help organize, get a core group to try to help put this together and share some of those thoughts, like very heavy, we want to move it around in one location or whatever, so. I think that's great.
I do too. I think that's fun.
It's something that's been talked about for a long time.
Well, and we did it for a short time.
Yeah.
But then it just, because it was Saturday afternoons, because I work Saturday, and I think that was a pillar for it, just being a Saturday afternoon. But we had a lot of people that participated, phrase me that. And now it's difficult to turn.
Actually, I think there's a page on one of Facebook groups that deals with New Franklin farmer-type agriculture. Markets of sorts. Alex Schreiner was on there, maybe that, I thought that you had.
And then we had good ideas, because a lot of them go to different places.
Any other old business? Any new business?
I'd like to request that the laws and ordinance committee review council rules for any possible updates or changes as part of council rules. They have to, you have to bring it up at a council meeting. They have to review and then bring suggestions to council for any adopting. Especially since this is a charter review here, some things that are in council rules are also in a charter. So if there's some changes that we may see that we want to make, we may have to have the charter changed also along with that.
And we can split that up too, if, you know, if we decide that. Mr. Wolf, I know you're a really hardworking guy, so I know you're capable of it, but if you, if it, if it, if it's a little daunting and you want to break it off, I think, I think others, others would be a little bit help.
Sure. I've got some suggested revisions that were floated, I don't know if it was a year ago or two years ago. And, but we, ultimately, there was no action taken on those, so I'll, I'll put those back out. It had to do, as I remember, I looked at it kind of quickly with, with our meeting notice requirements and making sure they satisfied public meetings requirements. But, and my recollection was that's something we could have corrected, we could correct through the council rules themselves. Wouldn't necessarily be a sharp charter issue, but look at the whole thing. I would encourage that, if that makes sense.
There are some things that we can change on our own, and a lot of that is just housekeeping things that are in the council rules. But one of the things is videotaping our meetings as opposed to having written notes, but that's part of our charter. The law is in the charter, so we have to move on and make those changes within the council rules. We have to wait for the charter to get voted on and approved, if they decide to put that as a change.
Yeah, we were actually trying about that. It is permissible now to use recordings instead of. But there has to be some authorization, whether it's a charter amendment, whether it's a resolution. I don't know. I'll take your word for it. And I guess while you're on that topic, there ought to be some discussion if, if council has themselves anything the council wants to suggest by way of charter amendments. Because the clock is going fast, isn't it? My goodness, it's January 17th already. And we're going to have our first meeting February 13th of the Charter Review Commission. And we'll make sure we advertise that. It's a public meeting. But that would be organizational, but from there, I think what we've done in the past, either the administration or council presented, suggested charter amendments, and that means drawing the form and the language. And that takes a little bit of time, because not only does it got to satisfy basically legal ease, it also has to satisfy the board of elections. So we'll probably got to get that in the, kind of in the radar for, for February for sure.
That was one of the topics in our workshop. This is talk about anything we have on our mind for charter.
Perfect. Any other new business? And now the second opportunity for public question and answers on any issues that might have been raised at the meeting. Got such a big crowd in, in public. Okay, hearing none. I don't know of any need for a secondary session. Anybody have any for the next session?
I'm here.
Our next council meeting is February 7th, 2024, 6 o'clock, right here, in council chambers. Make a motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
Kevin?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.